Tuesday, November twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty. Your webex meeting people are on the line. My guess is that everybody can hear. Are there any technical issues? If not, continue.
Okay.
Okay, basically, we run this meeting in two parts, new business and old business and new business. We'll cover new business first, the applications are heard in the order that they're received. After we hear the applications and we discuss the applications, we'll make a motion to close the application and continue forward to the following application. Once all the applications are closed and all the hearings are completed, we go into old business and vote on the applications at hand. And we introduce any new information in the second portion of the meeting. So if anything needs to be said, it's important to say it during the first half of the meeting. If there aren't any questions, I'll go ahead with the meeting. The only thing that I just want to point out was that I think Maureen had a letter from Chris Edge regarding a request for discussion regarding Board of Appeals. Maureen, do you want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, you'll see in the handouts from tonight that the, um, there's a letter from the Department of Economic Development from Chris Edge. It's regarding discussion to reduce or eliminate the fifteen-hundred-foot buffer between motor vehicle uses or gasoline stations or what have you in that section of the regulations. You brought it up to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I asked that this board be given the opportunity to think about it and comment because you're the ones that administer that regulation. So this is an FYI. There is no amendment in the, you know, being proposed yet. There's no new language or anything else, but I wanted you to see that you had it. And we may discuss it in January, or I may reach out before then and ask for comments to be submitted for our consideration if we move back in these wants to move faster on that. So, um, no need for discussion. I also want to point out that the proposed meeting schedule was distributed to you in your packet. It would be best if you voted on it this evening. It has to be in place by the end of January by statute. So you usually vote on it in November. And I'm hoping perhaps someone would move it to the top of the agenda so you can vote on it when I anticipate most of you will be in the room. Because some of you may decide you don't say for the items that you're not seated on. Throw that. So. And I think we checked for holidays and other such items. If we missed a holiday, we can always check this change in the meeting.
And now, yeah, we can move that to the side of the agenda. I first want to go through the roll call. Just to cover everybody, Chairman Frank Alanga here, Leonard Tubbs, Nelson Graca, Sandra Capola, Cory Whiteside, alternate Ryan Vell is here, alternate Hunter Matina has been.
Uh, he asked me to excuse.
And alternate Christine Mazanis here. So we're all here with the exception of Hunter Matina. And I think the last page on your package is the proposed two thousand twenty-one meeting schedule. Starts off with January twenty-fifth, uh, I'm sorry, January twenty-sixth. And it's the, I guess, the fourth Tuesday of every month. It goes all the way through, no meeting in August, no meeting in December, unless we have to have a special meeting, which is a separate type of item. So we've got a total of ten meetings in two thousand twenty-one. And then January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two meeting is on as well. Have you read a motion to approve this?
I mean, the motion I'll approve, I'll second.
A motion made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so moved. And with that, we can go into the regular agenda after that. CBA two thousand twenty dash eleven, map eleven dash thirty, block one thirty-two, East Berlin, two eighty-eight, as we rode. This application is postponed at the request of the applicant. Next application is CBA two thousand twenty dash twelve, map eleven-three, block one thirty-two, lot nineteen, two eighty-eight, as we rode. Again, this is postponed at the request of the applicant. This is Carrier Enterprises appealing the decision of the zoning enforcement officer dated July seventh and August nineteenth. Denying a building permit for new construction at that location. Next application is CBA two thousand twenty dash eighteen, map seventeen-four, block one forty-seven, lot three, eleven sixty-three Mill Street, East Berlin. Celine Khan, owner and principal Maple Avenue Repair Service LLC, is requesting a location of motor vehicle use approval for dealer and repairer's license for Berlin zoning regulation six F three B and eleven R at eleven sixty-three Mill Street, East Berlin. Property is owned, general commercial, and is owned by eleven seventy-three Associates LLC, owner and principal Fred Campanella. And speaking for the observation? Celine?
You can come up for the sound if you'd like.
But you're giving out fireproofs.
Yeah, I know you are.
You're the wiper board.
You always watch it for something for nothing.
Not really. I haven't broken my wiper board in forty years. Thank you.
So this is going to be our seventh license that we have with motor vehicle. Those are some of our locations that I showed you. Although the use isn't going to change. It's going to be the same use as has been existing there with the facelift, that's all. Um, we're in good standing with all of our licenses. It's just a proceeding that we have to go in front of, excuse me, the zoning department because of the application of every town. We get along with all of our neighbors at every location we have. And we're not moving this, we've been doing this since two thousand five. We run clean operations. Um, if any of you were a AAA provider, we're multiple towns also. Then the use is not going to change, which is that building will get a facelift and get cleaned up. And we're before you just because it has to get signed off by this department to go further with the application. We employ approximately fifty people between all the locations also. Well, right now, we're currently licensed to Meriting with two locations, North Haven with two locations, Plainfield with one location, and Suddington with one location. And if anybody wants to check with all those towns, there hasn't been a complaint. There was one complaint in North Haven when we opened up and just worked with the neighborhood, worked it out. There's never been another complaint in any of those other towns. We do low lighting, so we kind of, we, I put some pictures of that that were requests or some from some town, just try to work with everybody. We're not, um, we do very low-key private property telling. It's got to be something that was abandoned at a house or, or a repossession. We're not, we're big on how our scores are and how our, um, everybody's on their phone, that's how they get their services. If you look at our reviews, we have four and five-star ratings. We don't, you don't go patrol lots to do private property because that's not our business. We do about a hundred, hundred toes a day. We do power repairs, or we're AAA provider in our area. We just met with AAA today to be a backup provider for Berlin, Suddington, and Plainfield. You might have seen some of the trucks around town. Because we're closest town to it's Meriting that we do a lot of work in.
Can I answer any questions for anyone?
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. This is right on the corner from my house, actually, so I drive by it pretty much every day. So this, this is the property that has just a smaller unit, the smaller building closest to the road. And then Fred, your shop is not changing. It's for the other, it's for the car sale office. Is that right?
It's the left-hand building. If your, your back is to the street, it's the building on the left.
It's the Mill Street building.
Yeah, and, and so, and so you said you were going to do a little rehab on that?
Clean it up, clean it up, put some new signage up, correct.
And then are you, and then this is going to have like a whole bunch of heavy, uh, heavy towing stuff in the back, or?
Is it going to have heavy towing stuff?
Just for the car sale operation?
Um, we do some car sales, we do car towing. We'll do car towing for the Berlin Police Department and the State Police.
Yeah.
Um, most of the towing does not come back, unless it's an accident. Most of the towing does not come back to the facilities. Customers might have brought their repair facility of their choice, their body shop, unless it's an accident, which the people still have a right to choose where it goes. But if they went to the hospital, then those vehicles come back until they decide.
Yeah.
So people don't have their trucks towed to, uh, won't have their trucks towed to that shop. Most of them are having it towed to their repair facility. We will be towing for the police if there is a truck in town and the person is up in the hospital. They might come back there until the insurance teams where it has to go to. You can look at every, those are dumb pictures. I show pictures of our lots, they're all neat, clean. So it's not going to be a, we turn things around quick. We have a full-time person doing abandoned motor vehicles that works for us. We want to process them quick, we don't want to have them around.
All set, thank you.
Thank you.
This is going to be mostly a towing operation out here, then?
Well, we're going to do, we'll do some repairs, but the majority of it will be towing.
We've got it set up for a lot of repairs down there, that's for sure.
It's a small, it's a small ride. You know, like if we're doing some AAA, some of these batteries are difficult installs. They're not like the batteries of the old days. Fenders have to, the fenders have to come off, windshield calls have to come off, if it doesn't somebody's driveway. We do, we run four battery trucks for AAA. If there's a more difficult install, we can probably bring it back to that garage and do the battery replacement there. That's alternators for the AAA customers, things of that nature, basic repairs.
Mr. Chair? So we received the application and it came along with the twenty-twelve survey that was previously approved when this last came around, attorney had it in twenty-twelve. So Ms. Swims, is this the proposed layout with parking and a store, you know, car park in the back and that?
Yes, yes, it is.
There's not going to be a lot of major changes as to the way the operation runs.
Just announce who's speaking for that because we have the video and the recorder on. So just state your name, please.
Alex, Fred Campanella, owner of the property. License is currently in my name at Mill Street. Basically, I have two operations there. One is Accurate Automotive with the bigger building. And Mill Street is in the smaller building. We're not, it's not going to change much on how we work at this location. There is storage for thirty-eight cars in Lot as it, as it already has been pre-approved for. But I have for display for used cars, I don't even put that many, you don't put that many out there. But basically, it's a name change. I'm getting old and a lot of this is to help me with the night stuff because I'm just too old to go out at nights or put everything in his name and and slow down a little. But the change of the operation is not going to be major. It's just pretty much what we do right now.
The last location that we did was Plainfield, it's in there. You could, we put some before and after pictures of Plainfield. My daughter, two of my daughters are at each, one is at the Plainfield location, one's at Suddington. Um, and we run a very clean operation. It's not the, you won't even find broken car pieces on our yards. We're very, very fussy. Our other business, our family-owned, is an ambulance, is an ambulance company. So we're, we just run things the same way, we're very community. So.
I'm very familiar with the properties and what they've been in. I think they've always been clean, spotless, never, you've never seen anything really out of place there at all, so.
That's John on the presentation.
Thank you. Look forward, we're very community involved. We look forward to working in the town and being part of the community.
Any further questions?
No, she's.
Have a motion to close the hearing on this application?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Cool. We have a remand for, it's got application one thousand five, ten, to the court.
He's not going to swear on this.
So we go down this and allow those to be held.
If, if I may, you, um, if you move to, move that to after a portion of the regular meeting like we did last month, where you, you move the regular meeting for this, uh, um, eleven sixty-three Mill Street up to the, heard now, then you can move the remand with the acceptance of counsel of court, um, to the end of the meeting or to after the meeting so that you can make a decision on this, this item that you've already heard, that's permitted.
We can swap these. On the agenda, what we're doing is we're just swapping, uh, great.
So someone should make the motion to move it, um, to, to move the next item to after you would hear the regular meeting.
Yes. I'll make the motion to approve, uh, remand per agenda after a regular meeting.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
It's all moved. Okay, going to the regular meeting. Uh, application CBA twenty twenty dash eleven and application CBA twenty twenty dash twelve, we're postponed after requested the applicant, as indicated in the new business. And we're going to go to CBA application twenty twenty dash eighteen, map seventeen-four, block one forty-seven, lot three, one sixty, eleven sixty-three Mill Street, East Berlin. Celine Khan, owner and principal Maple Avenue Repair Service LLC, they're requesting a location of motor vehicle uses approval for dealer and repairer's license for Berlin zoning regulation six F three B, as indicated before, and eleven R at eleven sixty-three Mill Street, East Berlin. Property is owned, general commercial, and is owned by eleven seventy-three Associates LLC, owner and principal Fred Campanella. Make a motion to approve this application.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, this is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome to town.
We have, we have a copy of this?
Yep.
I don't need an extra copy.
Yeah, I don't either. These are, these are expensive, man, you can do these other people.
For the next time, there you go.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course, we got one for Cal, it's up ready. We got one for file, right? Yeah, yeah, we can add my name.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, folks.
I'm sore on.
Okay, uh, we can go to, uh.
We let this jacket hold up.
Thank you.
We're going to find out real quick because it's stuck outside.
Is, uh, Counselor Capola on the line?
She is. I, I am. Good evening, everybody, this is Jennifer.
Just wanted to check to make sure you were there. We were going to get started with the remand one thousand five, ten, and ten, and ten.
Okay.
Okay, um.
And I, I see multiple people sitting at the table, but I can't, I can't quite make everybody out because everybody has masks on. So who is sitting? Who is sitting? Because we only have, we've got four board members that should be sitting from last time.
Cory? Tony? Cory?
Ryan?
Christine Mitchell, ladies.
Christine, let the ladies run.
Okay.
And it looks as though we're, a couple of the, um, board members are going to excuse themselves.
And Sandra Capola is going to excuse herself because she, uh, would not have her curtsied.
I was going to say.
Oh, that was, yes.
All right, you were seated at the original. That's the last one.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
So I'll note for the record, it's seven-thirty and, um, Commissioner Capola, Commissioner Graca, and it looks like Commissioner Tubbs are excusing themselves.
Yeah, you guys have a, all have a nice Thanksgiving.
You could have thought yourself up to watch the two hours of evidence that was presented.
Watched some of it.
Two, more like four.
Four.
Take care, everybody, have a nice holiday.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, it's Attorney Capola again. May I ask, is Attorney Griffith and, and Mr. Mitchell, are they there?
Yes, we are.
Yes, they're on the site and the camera is probably, uh, I guess it's a little bit, you're not catching the side. You're catching that side.
I can go back there and they might, you see in here, it looks like.
Yeah, you're.
Yeah, I know, yeah, the other.
You're, uh, right there. Go play. Here's, if you, if you check that, if you move that cart over just about five degrees, it'll catch everybody.
You think it won't catch one?
Yeah. There you go, a little more. Right there, right there.
They're making a stop. No? Oh, we still got Ryan. Okay.
Thank you.
Christine, now you can move to the right.
Thank you, Ryan.
Christine, now we present, so if you want to, if you're a little, we can remove the camera.
My sports will be here.
No, I, either one.
Okay.
You drop yourself, what is it? You might want to just hold forward, please. I think everybody's still good. And I'll note for the record, uh, the, well, the members are back in the room.
Okay, uh, application one thousand five, ten, 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 road, map twenty-one dash one, block seven-three, lot fifteen, remand issued by Superior Court in the matter of Liam P. Mitchell at Albert's Berlin. Berlin zoning Board of Appeals, decreeing the board denial of the plaintiff's appeal of a cease and desist order issued by the zoning enforcement officer for unauthorized basement apartments in the R forty-three zone for Berlin zoning regulation fifteen eighty-one. This is continued from October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty. Uh, speaking for the application or speaking, I think, uh, you have the floor? When I remand?
If, if, um, if I may, again, this is Jennifer Capola, counsel to the board. If I could just make some introductory comments, I'd appreciate it. I just want to sort of revisit, um, the new exhibits that have come in so that we have those on the record and, and just try to focus everyone on, again, the exhibits for the remand hearing. Um, again, go over what the remand order is from the court, just so that we're, because it has been a month since, uh, since we last met. Um, I just want to make sure that everybody's focused. Also, um, just want to know, I see that, um, Kristin Grabowski is on the phone as well. She is typically the transcriptionist. Kristin, you are muted, but I'm sure you're listening. If, if, uh, there comes a point in time when you can't hear anyone, I, I want you to be aggressive with us, okay, about, about interrupting us because it's important for Attorney Griffith and I, um, as we move on in the remand, that we be able to have a good transcript. So please do interrupt, um, any of us if you can't hear us well. Um, and, uh, you know, I do have the concern because I'm participating remotely as well. So don't hesitate, Kristin, thank you. Um, so just to revisit in terms of, uh, the exhibits that were marked last time, again, the, the court's memorandum of decision was exhibit number one. Exhibit number two was the packet that I had distributed to the board for the remand hearing that consisted of, um, October twenty-fourth correspondence from me to the board with attachments that included case law, um, the designated contents of the record, including the list of designated contents, and then record items number one through ten. Submissions that had been made by the appellate or applicant's counsel, Attorney Griffith, who is present this evening, um, on October twenty-third for that October, um, October twenty-seventh remand hearing. He had, Attorney Griffith had labeled those items, um, as items number seventeen through twenty-one, and I'll get back to why that's important in a second in terms of the later markings. Connecticut general statute, section eight dash seven, and then also as an attachment, again, to my October twenty-fourth correspondence were excerpts from the Berlin zoning regulations. Exhibit number three were, uh, the Berlin zoning regulations that were filed with the court as designated contents of the record, record item number eleven. Um, and those were certified as the zoning regulations that were in effect at the time of the appeal of the cease and desist order to the board. There were also additional exhibits that were marked that I, I marked, um, number four and number five. Those were items that Attorney Griffith had sent to me on, on the, uh, on the date of October twenty-seventh, again, uh, when we opened the remand hearing at your last meeting. Um, exhibit number four was revised findings of fact that had been drafted by Attorney Griffith. Um, and he labeled those as a revised item number twenty-one. And then exhibit number five was black and white, um, black and white copies of photographs, which he had labeled as item number two. And then in the meeting itself, you took in, um, or item number twenty-two, rather, you also took in some exhibits, um, from, uh, Ms. Juicy, Juicy, your acting planner and zoning enforcement officer. Um, she labeled three additional exhibits. She labeled as exhibit number six, um, correspondence, email correspondence that she had exchanged with a prior owner of the property named Kim Regan. That email exchanges, um, from October twenty-seventh, and again, that was exhibit number six. Exhibit number seven were some, uh, voter registration documents that she had obtained from the registrar of voters. And then exhibit number eight, uh, were some notes that she had made for your meeting, again, for, for your October. eight were some notes that she had made for your meeting, again, for, for your October 27th meeting, and they consist of some typed written notes as well as some handwritten notes. Since the last meeting, we have taken in some additional documents, and I would like, if, if, and, and again, I'm sorry that I'm not there. I could not be there this evening with you in person, but staff does have copies of all these items with them. We do need to mark these four items. And again, we're picking, we're picking up with exhibit number nine. So we, we have, and you've received a, a copy of a letter that was notarized, again, from this prior owner, Kim Regan. It's dated November 19th. It's stamped as received on November 20th. If we could please mark that staff as exhibit number nine for the remand hearing. And also distributed to you were, were both proposed findings of fact as well as typed memorandum of staff comments that was updated through November 20th. We're gonna, we're gonna mark the proposed findings of fact as exhibit number 10. And I'll just give staff an opportunity to do that.
I'm good.
Okay. And then the memorandum of staff comments, it says updated 11/20/2020. That'll be exhibit number 11. And that had an attachment to it as well that everybody has, which was an excerpt from the zoning ordinance from 1954, just a one-page attachment. And then the last item I distributed to you via email today, Attorney Griffith had emailed it to me. It's an, an additional affidavit from the appellate, Liam Mitchell, and he, Attorney Griffith has marked that as item number 23. It has a one-page attachment. The attachment was a record, court record item, but it was part of the designated contents of the record, the record item that was record item number three. And it was labeled, we had labeled the pages in that record item because it was quite lengthy. It's ROR 3F1, so that's also attached to the affidavit. So that affidavit will be exhibit number 12 for the remand hearing. So with that out of the way, I just want to, again, to focus everybody in terms of additional comments that are being made in the public hearing and for, again, for the board's consideration and deliberation this evening. The remand language, if you, if you turn to page two of my October 24th, 2020 correspondence to the board, which is, again, exhibit number two for the remand hearing. So I'll just let, I'll let Adam get there. And on that page again, page two, Adam. Thank you. You'll see the court's directive to you. This court finds that the board has not properly considered the plaintiff's assertion and evidence of a pre-existing legal non-conforming structure and use concerning the basement apartment. As such, the court remands this matter to the board for further consideration. Upon remand, the board should consider the evidence presented by the plaintiffs concerning the timing of the construction of the basement apartment, a relation to the applicability of the zoning regulations as they changed over time. And a footnote five appears there, which states, "The current record contains evidence to support a finding that the structure of the basement apartment was legally constructed in the 1950s and has remained so over time. Concerning the use of the structure, reasonable inferences may be made and consideration should be given to the regulatory definition of dwelling at the time that the basement apartment was originally permitted and constructed. However, the board is the finder of fact here and may make any reasonable findings of fact that find substantial support in the evidence. In this regard, the board is reminded of its statutory obligation as provided for in the general statute, section 8-7. Three, the parties may present new evidence at the remand hearing. If the board determines that the basement apartment was initially constructed as a permitted legal structure and use, then the board should further consider whether the basement apartment has remained so constructed and used over time. The board should make reasonable inferences from the evidence presented. In considering the evidence presented, the board should consider the word dwelling at the time of the initial construction of this house provided for up to two families. Based upon the board's factual findings, after further consideration at the remand hearing, using the evidence presented and reasonable inferences therefrom, the board should then conclude whether the basement apartment is a pre-existing legal non-conforming structure and use or not. Only after determining and considering all of the foregoing can the board determine whether or not to uphold the cease and desist order." So just to revisit, you have, again, and Adam, this is in exhibit two as well. We talked about this last time. He makes the reference to section 8-7. If you could get to page two of that, Adam. It's a separate, you had it scanned as a separate document?
Under exhibit two?
Yes, under exhibit two. You had it, you had it scanned as Connecticut general statutes 8-7 in a separate scan. It's beyond all the record items. It was after Attorney, Attorney Griffith's October 23rd submissions.
Okay. Let me find which of these 237 pages.
Yes, it's very long. I know that exhibit. Because the transcript was quite long as well. Okay, right there. Yes. Yep. Just go up one page to 252, please. You'll see, you'll see at, at this page, towards the bottom, you'll see essentially what you need to be focused on, what the judge was making reference to. Whenever a zoning board of appeals grants or denies any special exception or variance in the zoning regulation applicable to any property or sustains, or sustains or reverses wholly or partly, any order requirement or decision appealed from, it shall state upon its records the reasons for its decisions. Okay? So you need to, again, the, this is the statute that governs the action that you can take, and you can sustain or reverse wholly or partly any order. Okay? And you need to state upon the record the reasons for your decision. So you have before you, again, just going back to the findings of fact that have been submitted to you. You have as exhibit four, if you, if you want to just kind of narrow in on this, you have as exhibit four, the revised findings of fact that were provided to you by Attorney Griffith at the October 27th meeting. And you also have received for this meeting the proposed findings of fact, which we have just marked as exhibit 10, from Ms. Juicy. So I just draw your attention again. You've been presented with these proposed findings. You can certainly use them as a starting point. You could do something different. It's entirely up to you. You are the fact finder. But, you know, I just want to point out to you, again, what those exhibits are in terms of proposed findings that you have been provided with. So with that, and, and again, you know, I, I am here to support the board. I'm counsel to the board. And, you know, if you need further guidance, I offered guidance, obviously, at your, your last meeting regarding abandonment. You had some questions, principally, that's what my comments went to. I am to, here to support you in any way that you need. Obviously, very familiar with the, with the record contents and the offerings of both the applicant and the appellant and Juicy. So proceed. The public hearing is still open. You have some additional evidence that's been received, and I think, you know, you should ask any questions that you have with regard to that, and certainly let the parties present whatever evidence that they want. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything that Attorney Griffith needed to prevent?
Well, I thought it would be appropriate this time. I realize we've had lengthy hearing. I wanted to briefly summarize for the board. Evidence has been submitted and, and point out that I have submitted tonight for your consideration affidavit by Mr. Mitchell. And that affidavit in part, there was some question about whether or not he had, even if I had rented out the basement dwelling, and, and he addresses that in the affidavit saying that it had been rented out. Also, he does talk about when he purchased the property, what, what he, what the basement looked like, and it's basically tracks, found it the same way, same as when the Regans bought it back in 1991. And that would include the, the elements or attributes of a, of a basement blockout apartment. And then finally, that, that the, that the property, as it was listed, it was listed as a two-family, multifamily property. And again, referenced a, a record item that the, that the town had submitted. So I just wanted to point that out to the commission. And then in, in summary, just to summarize the basis for our claim of a vested right as a legal non-conforming use, to point out to the board that a non-conforming use is an existing use which upon adoption of the zoning regulation would no longer be permitted. And in this particular case, we have a situation where a house was constructed in the, in the 1950s, and we know that when it was, after it was constructed in 1960, that from 1960 up through 1981, the basement was rented out. We know that because one of the people who lived in the house has set forth that, that information and those facts in, in an affidavit sworn statement. And with that, as of the date when the zoning ordinance changed, which to my research is in September of 1962, it was at that time that the legal non-conforming right was vested in the owners of that property, 1005 Kelsey Road, going forward. Now, we've put forth proposed findings of fact, and that's in the, I believe it's the exhibit four, and we're doing it based on substantial evidence that's been provided to the zoning board, and I just want to go through that briefly with you. We know that the concrete slab and foundation, when it was built, included separate plumbing in the basement for bathroom and kitchen fixtures, as well as door openings that were carved out of the, of the, of the foundation to the basement garage and the exterior. We also know that, that the plumbing is shown in photos that have been provided to you and been confirmed by your building official. There's a letter of that effect in the, in the record. Also, there are photos that have been submitted of the carved-out doorways. Further, we know that the original plumbing was hooked up and used by the basement dwellers starting in November of 1960 and continued forward from that time. So it wasn't just that it was there, it was in fact used and hooked up, as well as the bathroom. And again, I refer you to the, the affidavit of Mr. Seer, who, who basically stated that it had been rented out for the next 21 years after, after his parents bought it in 1960. We also know that the basement had all of the attributes of a walkout apartment. And the reason we know that is we now have a sworn statement from Mrs. Regan, who basically stated when, when we bought the property and, or when she bought the property in 1991, that she observed that. And in addition to that, we know that during the time she owned the property, that it was, that it was used and occupied apparently by her brother-in-law and presumably by an adult child. On top of that, we have Mr. Mitchell's affidavit that we have, we've submitted tonight. Showing that the, that the Mitchells continued to use the, the apartment during that time period. By law, in September of 1962, the right to use the basement became vested in all owners going forward, and that includes the Mitchells. Based on that, we are requesting that, that the board make the finding, findings of facts as, as proposed by us, based on substantial evidence that's been submitted to the board, and that further, that you overturn the cease and desist order of your zoning officer because of the existing legal non-conforming use in the basement as a dwelling.
Thank you. Maureen. No, I was just gonna ask Maureen, if you could provide some information regarding the last building permit that was issued for that property, when it was issued and what it was for?
So the building permit itself for the construction of the dwelling?
Right.
That was the reconstruction of the dwelling in, I have to look, but I believe it's 1969. Building permit 3363, in 1969, for rebuilding the home where the number of house key units was left blank. However, the soil test done at the same time did show that it was for three bedrooms and had, and that's in my report, under item 1B, is this permit, is a reference to this permit. And it showed a total of three bedrooms, one bathroom, one shower, one, one lavatory, and the blank on that form says basement fixtures, and in parentheses next to it, only with special permission, and the blank line is left next to that. And that's with the private sewage disposal system related to the property.
And this was.
Is that the one you're asking about?
Yeah, and this has been treated as a single family from, from the tax base records since 19, when?
I think we have the oldest card we have was the 1966 card, and then moving forward from, through from there.
Right, so.
All, all in the record.
So the town, the person who took their permit abandoned the use of that as a two-family, if it was in fact ever a two-family, okay? But the person abandoned the use of that two, that property, and it was a two-family, when they took that permit. There was never two electrical bills, there was never two gas bills. There was never two gas bills or heating bills. There was never an indication that there was two separate families residing there, except the fact that we have one piece of evidence that says that people receive voter registration at the two locations. That could be, I mean, when I was living in my mother's house, I got voter registration. When I was living in the basement as well, but it wasn't a two-family house. Okay, so my understanding of that is that this thing would have been a single family. Taxes a single family, it's been.
Building record?
No, the building records, I mean, the building application for the permit that was for a single family, the taxes a single family. And it sounds like the person who had this house and after this fire or whatever happened, when they rebuilt the house, they abandoned the use as a two-family, if in fact there was a two-family there, which we never had any record of anyway, because we didn't have any residents at the location that had separate gas or separate electric bills or anything like that, separate telephone bills, I don't know. I mean, you know, I guess my point is that the fact is that the person who built the house or, you know, rebuilt the house back in the 60s actually abandoned any use of a two-family, if there was a two-family there. And then ever since then, if some people live downstairs, well, that's fine. I mean, people live downstairs all the time, different houses, you know what I mean? But if you're being taxed as a single family, and if you're being listed on the records as a single family, I don't know how we can safely in our minds say that, you know, this should be a two-family. I, you know, for myself, I think, you know, the way I'm looking at it is you, we have to make a decision on whether or not you did the right thing, issuing a cease and desist order. Okay, that's the bottom line for us, okay? And, you know, my thought is, you know, yeah, based on the information that you have, you made the right decision. You know, because that's the information that's been going on since 19, what, 1960 something?
69, but that's second permit.
And to treat it as a two-family, when taxes were being paid on this building for, as a single family since 1969, is absolutely in my mind incorrect. You know, the person who had this property abandoned the two-family property, if there was a two-family there to begin with, which I don't think there even was. But the person had that property, enlisted it as a two-family, and they got the permit as a two-family, I would say, you know, you did the wrong thing. But based on what happened back there in the 60s, I think what the decision that you made, as far as issuing a cease and desist order, was totally correct.
I would also like to add, the certificate of occupancy from April 1970 says proof of occupancy as a single family dwelling.
I'd like to address, if I could? Okay, so in regards to abandonment, the affidavit signed by Mr. Seer clearly shows the use was not abandoned. That's number one. And number two, and I would refer you to the staff comments that were, have been submitted, which basically says that if the non-conforming use was in existence at the time when it was rebuilt at the fire, if it was in existence, then it should be allowed to continue. And we submit and we agree that it is, it was in existence. There isn't, there hasn't, there was not an abandonment. Clearly, there was continuous, and there was no intention and really no evidence of an abandonment.
Having a relative living downstairs, or a brother-in-law, or a neighbor, or anybody who, you know, helped with the expenses, having somebody living downstairs is not construed as a two-family dwelling. I'm sorry, that's not a two-family dwelling. Taxes have been paid for 30, 40 years as a single family. You know, if somebody's living downstairs, that's up to the person that owns the property. And, you know, you can't call it a two-family just because somebody's living downstairs. I mean, that doesn't make any sense to me, because it wasn't listed as a two-family. And the person wasn't paying rent, the person didn't have a separate electric meter, the person was just living there and helping with the expenses of the house. And the person could have been a relative, or it could have been just a friend.
Legal non-conforming use, that's what we have, and that's how it was used. And that's what the evidence shows. That's how it was used.
In other words, if there was a single meter back then, and meters didn't get changed, I was instrumental myself in the industrial park, getting separate meters for industrial, and then it went to residential. And that was in the late, in the 90s. My point is, is if it was existing and it was allowed at the time and it continued, it takes a lot to disturb that. In other words, that person would have to physically change or alter the way that basement was under the law. In other words, we have the original cabinets. We have the original everything down there. And we, and I could have, the person could have remodeled it and still been in compliance. It's the abandonment part.
I have a couple of things that I'd just like to talk about, if I may. First off, in my staff report, I want to make a correction. When I was cutting and pasting and reordering the memorandum of staff comments on 1A21, I said that the the data on the building permit was attached, you know, the building permit was attached. That was in the record, so I didn't make attachments to all those things you already had. Like, attached, that was a nail, I'm sorry. It was not attached, I wanted that to be evidence. I also want to make a point that goes back to something we heard at the last meeting and get a clarification, maybe if I may, and put on the record that we heard previously that there was a tenant utilizing a trailer on the property. And if that's this property, that would be a new violation. And I just want to make sure that it's not this property that you have your tenants living in right now.
Right now?
It has a violation, with a violation, you said they were utilizing a trailer on your property because they were no longer living in the apartment. So I was just concerned because.
We're talking about 2020, or we're talking about when they had the house burned?
At the last meeting, the statement was made that the tenant was no longer there and was living in a trailer on the property.
He's living in the hotel on the term ticket.
And you're, that you had made that evidence. So I wanted to make sure that I got on the record that that would not be a permitting use in a single-family zone at this time. And as far as the record items, or rather the the existence of the apartments and needing abandonment or not, the finishes in the basement, having kitchens, having bathrooms, facilities, a den, a family room, a entertainment space, whatever, those do not necessarily make an apartment. The becomes a violation when they're rented. We no longer allow those fixtures to be put in houses because they could potentially be a problem if they are a separate dwelling unit. But the, all of the permits that you've seen show that it was one housekeeping unit. They, over and over again, the owners of the property applied to and/or had records with the town showing the house as one housekeeping unit. So much like Chairman Frank Langia mentioned, where there's finishes in his basement that have another kitchen, you can cook your sauce down there. I had neighbors when I babysat that had a kosher kitchen when I was a kid. It was separate, they had to keep their food separated. So there are times where houses have separate kitchens. That does not make it a rental unit. Multi-generations living together, while we now consider we have the terminology for an accessory dwelling unit. That wasn't a thing earlier on, and generations had fixtures, but that doesn't mean it's a rentable unit. And I maintain that if that space was rented, it was not done so with the knowledge of the town or its authorization. And that the finishes and other amenities of a walkout basement that the council has offered as evidence that it was a separate dwelling unit do not constitute things that mean necessarily an extra dwelling unit. Anyone with a full basement, not anyone, there are houses, we have to go through the hatchway on the outside. But the good percentage of houses, if they have a basement, you have an interior door, you go down to the basement. They have a door out to the garage, they might have a door outside if it's above grade. All that means you can get outside from your basement. The basement not being finished, marked as unfinished, marked as a single room, how many rooms in the basement? The older card says it's one room. It then, you know, had added cards, the assessor marks what he sees, but it was never marked as a rental unit. And that's, that's a value that is taxable.
This memorandum, item number two and item number three, basically is where I get really held up. It says, "The related building permit dated October 13, 1954 specifies the number of housekeeping units, one." And then the next one goes on and says, "Certificate of occupancy dated September 29, 1955. Property has been inspected and found in fulfillment to zoning ordinance and permit number A1436 was issued on October 13, 1954. And buildings to be used for dwelling, number of families, one." So I'm still having a hell of a time trying to support what you're saying, because this is one family, one household, taxed as a single-family house, and you're telling me that it's a two-family because of the previous use. You know, the previous use, it could have been used as a fourth family, okay? But it's not taxed as a fourth family, it's taxed as a one-family. And the permit and the certificate of occupancy was for a single family. So I'm not understanding how we can provide some type of report for that, because it goes against everything that we do and the way we do it.
So if I could address the.
But now, you know, I'm not finished yet, because, you know, I could rent my basement out to six families. I have two refrigerators and freezer in the basement. I've got another kitchen in the basement, and we got a bathroom in the basement. I could rent it out to three families if I wanted to, but it's not. It's a one-family house, okay? And I'll be tired if I'm gonna rent it out to, you know, to two, three more families. I'm, you know, I'm not gonna do that, because it's a one-family house. It's been taxed as a one-family house. It's been constructed, the permit says, one household, the permit says, you know, the certificate of occupancy, single family, number of families, one, everything is one.
Except that the permit that you referred to expired and was void. And the certificate of occupancy that you referred to was issued in error. That's what it says in the memo, and that's what the records show.
But the permit that was issued in 69.
So again, the permit that you're referring to was void. So it didn't exist. And certificate of occupancy was issued in error. Which one? The one in 1955?
What about the one in 1970?
The one in 1970, when that was issued, the vested right had already kicked in, kicked in in 1962.
And I have to say something. As far as taxes, I got a letter right now. As soon as you guys ruled the first time, I got a letter from Ferraro saying, now that it's a single-family house, I'm taxing you more money. And it went from $195 to $206,000. And I got a letter that says that.
Well, that's probably just because of reevaluation.
You, no, he specifically says in the letter that because it became a single-family house, it is worth more. That is a quote on that piece of paper. I wish I had, but as far as taxes, you have the same people that did the taxes and were the building inspector back in those days.
If I may, the issue since, I believe that the, other than the renting of the unit went, it was known that the town, the zoning office had determined the house was a single-family in 2015. I think that any of those matters with regard to the house and how Mr. Mitchell has used it, other than what led to the violation, would not be relevant, because because he rented it after we already determined it was a single-family use in 2015. So that's part of the violation. It's, so that can't create the history of the property, in my opinion, if you follow what I'm saying. I know that's not terribly clear, but but the, in 2015, the previous owner, or, I'm sorry, I'm not sure whether it was 14 or 15, the previous owner received the letter that we understood. They had indicated there was a second apartment, or an apartment in this home. The town had no record of it. They had the opportunity to appeal. We understood that by, that it wasn't, that that wasn't what they were going to be doing, you know, that they did not have it rented. And therefore, it was not being used as a two-family. The house was then sold, but a notice was put on in the building permit records and in the zoning file, all that said that. So the things that happened with Mr. Mitchell afterwards were violations that were known. And that would have been the time to, one of the times that could have been appealed as well. So that's not relevant to the conversation at this point.
There has been evidence that, the evidence that's been submitted that shows that it was used north of 50 years, a basement as an apartment. Including before, including before the time that the zoning ordinance was changed in September 1962.
And you go on Zillow right now and see 1005, where they rented that apartment out, March of 2014, that they had it for 1,200 dollars a month. On Zillow right now, I got a copy of it here.
Again, I believe that as soon as it was called to the town's attention, the town dealt with it as a violation. And that the town, the finishing of the basement by the first owner after the certificate of occupancy, presumably, I'm guessing, and after, and all the other use of it as anything other than occupied as a single dwelling, family dwelling, was kept out of the town's radar. It was not done legally, it was done under the town's radar. It was not constructed with two housekeeping units. And in my opinion, one of the most glaring items is a septic system. They are put in based on the presumed occupancy of a house. That is one of the key factors with septic systems, is the number of bedrooms. And they ask for the number of fixtures in the house. And it appears as though if those fixtures were there at that time, they were kept from the town's awareness. The town does not have the right to enter into the property to inspect other than for the COs, you know, the single-family houses. So I think it was all kept under the town's radar.
So can I, I just have, I have just one comment, just about something, and this is directed through the chair to Attorney Griffith. So I understand the position that you're taking about some of the building records. I think what I'm hung up on though too, and I just say this. I mean, this is a time, right, when we, when we have the owner actually signing. For example, I'm looking at ROR 3B1. For example, I'm looking at ROR 3B1. So, and from the departmental file, David, you probably have the the court record item number three, it's ROR 3B1, it's one of the certificates of occupancy that dates back to 54.
You mean the building permit that expired?
Yeah, the, yeah, so, so, so I understand what your position is about the expiration of it, but, but I mean, it was signed by, and I, and I'm not gonna pronounce his name right, but Mr. Potzek. It was signed by him. It was, it appears to have been signed by the architect. It indicates number of housekeeping units, one. I mean, they, so regardless of its status, I mean, they signed these documents that, and, and, you know, there's a number of them that are signed by, whether it be the official, whether it be the property owner. And, I mean, so, so you're saying they should just completely discount the stuff even though it was signed by the property owner at the time, the officials at the time? That they're, because of this idea that, that, that they weren't valid, they were determined to later, so, so they're just supposed to disregard the content itself? They're supposed to disbelieve that? I, I just, I don't get that argument. And I think, you've got to explain what your position is because it sounds like, and I'm going by what the chair is saying, like, I'm not trying to interject myself at all. I just, I, I think they're having a hard time getting beyond the fact that there's this content here, it's signed off on, and regardless of the status of, of the permit or whether a permit expired or something was wrong. I mean, you're asking them to sort of disbelieve what the content is because you're saying, you know, this, this, there was an actual use as a two-family use that existed prior to 1962, when, you know, the regulation changed. I mean, that's, and, you know, they're hung up about what they're seeing here. So I think you've got to offer them something on that because obviously Tony's comments are going to what he's seeing. And he has said this repeatedly, I mean, he said it, you know, on the first go around. Because I remember, you know, from the transcript, so maybe you could
Well, again...
Comment more about that, David.
Well, again, yes, thank you. Again, the permit became void, okay? It became void after a year, town regulation, whatever, it says it, it says it on its face. And then a certificate of occupancy was issued in error. So, and then, and then there was a subsequent application, there was a subsequent application. And in that application, there are notations on it. It's in front of, it's in front of the board, which says, we're taking, taking the situation as it exists. And it existed at that time. There was, you know, that's the, if you will, the foundation of the property, the slam. The doorways that were carved out. So there are no, there's a notation on the application for a building permit, the other one was gone. It expired, it expired, it was void, the certificate of occupancy, that was, you know, was issued in error.
Where is, what exhibit is are you talking about?
He's referring to building permit A2178.
Is there a document number?
I'll have to look for that, I'm looking for, I'm trying to find the document number. But on the top of it, it's handwritten, and it says, certificate of occupancy issued in error, September 29th, 1955. Should have been renewal of building permit A1436. This application takes situation as it exists, a new permit is applied for. I take the right, the reading of that from the zone, from my standpoint, is I would take that as it expired, we're renewing it, we have to start, we have to just, you know, reissue, reissuing.
That's normal.
As opposed, as opposed to saying the situation as it exists being the construction being different than what was applied for instead being that the situation is, it expired and we gotta deal with it.
That's normal, I've seen that, I've seen that a lot.
But that was, it was right there, handwritten at the top of that, you can't read it, but I was able to read it on a, on a copy.
And the plumbing was put in, and the slab...
It's ROR 3B7.
So, so let's go to ROR 3B hyphen 6. Let's go to ROR 3B hyphen 6. Which is on that, there's a notation that says, doesn't say needs renewal of permit, it says needs removal of permit. Certificate of occupancy issued in error, couldn't, couldn't understand woman in parentheses, foreigner. Doesn't talk about renewal, it says removal of the permit. It's just what, this is what the record says.
I will look to see if I have a...
ROR 3B hyphen 6.
I have the most original document.
When you're not changing the use because the plumbing has to be...
I also would state you cannot renew a permit this void.
I might add that a hatchway is not considered a fire escape. The fire marshal would not allow that anywhere, anytime, after, after the doorway.
So this is Jennifer Capola, counsel for the board. I have to say, so I'm, I'm looking at, for Attorney Griffith, I'm looking at the exhibit three that was submitted as a paper filing to the court because I have those with me, David. Because you, and it, and it looks like, and I could even take a picture of it, I guess, but so it looks like ROR 3B6 looks like removal of permit. But ROR 3B7 looks like renewal of building permit. It looks like they used, that two different terms are used, quite frankly. B6 looks like removal and B7 looks like renewal.
If I may, Jennifer has a newer copy, Christine? Jennifer made, she has a lesser generation copy in front of her. So she may be able to tell you what she's thinking. And are you gonna send a copy to us?
Right after it says, was given certificate of occupancy in error, then in parentheses, I think it says see date. I just, I don't understand that, I guess.
Which document are you on?
The one that you...
Oh, the, okay, so that one.
Yeah, handwritten. So...
Yes, you did.
Okay. So why was that given in there? You know, why, why, I guess?
They had given it out and I hadn't completed the...
Completed it, and then...
I've seen COs issued in town, I've put in a vacuum issue in town where the stairs to the basement were not put in. You open the door and it's ten foot drop.
A foreigner woman said that there were...
And it, no, the building inspector came over and saw it and canceled the certificate of occupancy, I've seen that.
Absolutely.
So it was canceled, it wasn't changed from one to two?
No.
Or was it? I mean, is there evidence that it was changed from one to two-family?
I still want the 69 application to be here. Now, I still want to understand why we can't let you use the 1969 application, which refers to one family as well?
Because the person that had that house still used it and rented it out. So it had used before the fire and after the fire, and it was still used for the same purpose.
So why didn't he put a two-family down in his application?
I have a building permit right here with me and they don't change. They never ask on the building permit what the zoning is. They just say what the address is, they do not ask for the zoning. So when you're filling out this paperwork, I've been a builder in this town for a long time, they never ask for zoning. It's just been since Maureen that they run it through. Every department gets a chance to look at everything a lot more efficiently than they used to do a few years ago.
A CO is issued, isn't there usually a worker by the building inspector?
I don't know what they did in those days, I know what they do now.
I, I got a certificate of occupancy for a house on Honeyberg Drive and I got the permit and it was for 1969. And it was for a single-family, R50 zone, R25 zone, or whatever it was. It was a single-family and, you know, I even had a downstairs kitchen, drawing the picture of the house. And it said, "Single-family," it said, "Single-family" on the permit.
Yeah, but in these days, they didn't care.
That was 1969, that was 15 years ago.
It was 62 that they allowed it from the swan.
If I may, the application asked for the number of families, so it's not that it is printed on the permit, but it is written by the applicant on the application form.
It's written as a single-family. I mean, I, you know, I can't go against that, I can't go against that. If I did, I'd have an insurrection from the whole town coming over here and beating me over the head. I just can't go against that. I mean, I probably would have to be in the witness protection program if I did. I'm sorry, I just can't go against what that says.
You got a signed affidavit saying that, Dave.
That is more than a signed affidavit, that's a legal document. A signed affidavit is a legal document as well, but that's a legal document from the town. I represent the town in this particular case, I can't go against that.
What I'm saying is, is the zoning at that time did not allow it. And to be grandfathered in as a non-conforming is to be allowed at the time and continue to use.
This was 1970, it was approved as a single-family dwelling, okay? There has been nothing that's happened since then, other than the fact that somebody's lived down there and rented. Okay, illegally, illegally. No electric meter, no second meters, no nothing.
That's wrong, sir, I'm sorry. They've never changed the meters until way later in life, okay? They were, they was very common to have three families with one meter. You can go into Britain and still have them, they're going back to them. But my point is, is that it was allowed at the time and just because the town maybe didn't catch it, it was still allowed at the time and it was, they continued, we show a record of renting it out from, to this day.
That's why I said, I said, whether it was one family or two families or three families, it was a meter or not meter, I can't go against the town record like that, I just can't go against that record. I'm sorry, I just can't, I can't go against that record. That record shows that it's a single-family in 1970, it's a single-family dwelling. And as far as I'm concerned, if it was a multifamily, it was abandoned, totally abandoned.
How?
Because of that piece of paper right there. Because of that piece of paper right there, it was totally abandoned.
When somebody comes to the town and they, they, they fill out the paperwork and they, they, they say, okay, what's the zoning matter, okay, that's what it is. And the person, in order to abandon it, you'd have to have a lot more than that. You'd have to abandon the use. That's what the grandfather clause says.
Back in 1970, if that was put as a, as a two-family, the person would have put a separate electric meter in 1970.
No.
Tell me that they wouldn't be doing that.
I didn't.
That's not, no, 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 I'm not that dumb, okay? Back in 1970, okay, if that was a single-family house, if that was listed as a two-family house, they would have put in utilities for two families, okay? In 1970, they would have put utilities in for two families. Don't come in there with a share.
I respectfully disagree.
Well, you can disagree all you want, but as far as I'm concerned, you can go back to the electric company and find out what they did in 1970. In 1970, that's not that far away, okay? And that's a single-family dwelling and it says 1970, April 14th, 1970. I cannot dispute that, okay? If I did, I would have people hugging me over the head. You know, I'm sorry, I mean, if I could, if I could dispute it, I would dispute it, I can't dispute it.
I would like to bring back up a matter prior to 1970, even that, the affidavit that is presented to Mr. Seer. Again, not sanctioned as a two-family in my research. From my research, I do not find that there was a two-family use that owners that built it, that had it up until 1962, used it, rented it as a two-family, there's nothing that says it was a two-family. The cabinet maker, sounds like from the, what we heard from, the evidence was that he installed the kitchen. If it was unfinished in those first assessor's records, you know, he built, he built cabinets in his basement, he did finishes. Maybe he had other trade skills as well, that doesn't mean the town authorized or allowed it to be a two-family. And again, I do turn to the septic system as well, not only the applications, but the calculations for the septic system. The septic system is very dependent upon the number of families as to how you size a septic system. And the natural use, so they did their...
But you know, the evidence that we got here, I think that, you know, I don't have any more questions. I don't know if anybody else has any more questions or any more comments, but I'm ready to take a vote on this.
So, excuse me, just, just to make you aware, I did send to Attorney Griffith and also to Ms. Juisty and to Mr. Lewis that I sent, I sent them copies of B6 and B7 of that removal and renewal language. So if you wanted to take a look at that, I did, I did zero in on the particular words.
Maybe it went to my email?
Yeah, I sent them by email, I'm sorry, to the three of you.
Adam's trying to bring it up right now. Adam's trying to bring it up right now.
If you want me to text it, I can. I just figured email would be better, but.
Adam has it. He's been getting. Getting there.
See, so that's B seven. So again, um, the court record item three, which was the departmental file. Um, that's B seven and it looks like it says renewal. Um, and then B, if you look at B six though, as attorney Griffith pointed out, it looks, it, it's hard to tell. That looks more like removal. But.
Look like.
Incredible, incredible.
Yeah, I can see.
R E I N A, A D A L, renewable.
If renewal, I've heard it.
It's not renewal. R E I E W. Needs renewal. Needs renewal of permit.
Who wouldn't say needs removal?
Yeah, it's, I think that one's a little more difficult to tell.
Can I ask a point of clarification? Is B seven the application for the night, for what is, ends up being the nineteen seventy CO?
Um, B seven is, if you look in your, in your packet, and again, this is in your exhibit. Your exhibit two, this is, this is attached. You, you want to look for the pink sheet that says record item number three. It's in that packet. And, and it's actually, it's September twenty, uh, twenty first of nineteen fifty six.
No, I think you want to.
I don't care about the nine one.
What, what I'm looking for, what I'm looking for is something that can show me the intent of the owner that, that applied for the CO in nineteen seventy. And not just the CO. If the CO doesn't have the owner's intent documented. But if, if the application, which was signed by the owner, applies for a single family, that makes a difference to me.
It's the, uh, R O R three B fourteen. And three B one, these are the, yeah, from nineteen sixty nine.
Seventeen.
Number of families one.
Application for installation of the required private sewage disposal.
Yeah, see the application, what, uh.
Families one, written bill.
It's gonna look like this.
And is there, but we don't have a signature of the owner, like, like.
Well, that, 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 just going back, I don't want to interrupt anybody. Sorry, it's hard for me because I'm not in, in the room. But that, that was kind of my point about raising, you know, the original owners, Dorothy and Richard Pouchik. I'm sorry. I mean, you have all those earlier records that are actually signed by Richard, right? That indicate this is, this is a one family. Um.
Yeah.
But I don't, David, I don't think there is anything that was signed in sixty nine, right? By the, actually signed by the owner.
Yes, for useless information. I think Richard Pouch was a barber in Britain.
Well, yeah, the only copy that we have on three B fourteen is just, it, it's, it's basically, it looks like almost a printed owned by. There's no real place for an attestation or a signature. And even if Bernard at Seer filled this out, uh, it seems a little weak to hang. I'm not sure.
Yeah, the only, the only other things that you, the only other thing that you have signed by an owner is the Cabozi or Cabozi. The three, um, R R three B nineteen. And then you also have, um, we haven't looked at this. You've also got, there was one other. You've got three, three, uh, B twelve, R R three B twelve. Which is a request for the placement of the trailer from nineteen sixty eight. And that's, and that's signed.
That doesn't get to the number of families.
That's signed by, well, it says yours truly Raymond and Bernard at Seer. I'm not sure. And then it's attached to by notary, but I don't know which one of the two of them signed it. Has both their names on it.
Yeah, but I, I, I'm dismissing that because that's the result of an application. It's not, there's no attestation on seventeen. I'm looking for the intent of the owner.
Well, they go down, pull the sign, the code, and they're. Brand that.
Yeah, that's the closest I get right there.
Nineteen eighty eight installed new one hundred, one hundred amp service on garage. Separate garage. Separate door.
Separate door.
Any more comments, questions?
I'm going to close the public hearing.
I just, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
No, no, I just had one, uh, just reminder. Um, as you go into deliberation, again, individual statements of, uh, the board members are not collective reasons for your action. So you need to, you know, when you deliberate, you know, certainly have a discussion about, you know, your individual, um, you know, your respective thoughts about the matter. Um, and, uh, the direction that you think respectively, uh, the board should take. But, um, when it, when it comes time to give, uh, reasons for your action, it needs to be a collective statement. So I just remind you about that piece of it. Because, uh, in individual statements of board members are not collective reasons for an action. So just keep that in mind.
Okay. If I might say one other thing?
Sure.
Okay, just because we've been talking about it. I've gone back and I've looked at the, at the voided building permit. And also, uh, the application. And as we sit here, I'm, I don't know. But I'm not so sure that the voided building permit has a signature of Mr. Pouch. And I'm not sure about these other documents, whether or not they were in fact signed by them. We've raised, it's been raised, so I'm, you know, again, I just point out, I don't think we know that. Not that it makes any difference based on. Yet, I'm not so sure about that.
Okay, um.
I, I do have a question.
Yeah.
Do we have any documentation of when, um, the two driveways and two garages came into existence?
Excuse me, I'm sure there's a building permit for the garage. I think that was just pointed out by Mrs.
For the second garage?
So, but somebody was just looking at it.
Yeah, that's a good example.
I think it was.
Me?
It just.
Nineteen.
So the second freestanding garage, um, the driver was added in nineteen eighty.
I think it is.
Um, there's a plot plan for a two car garage in Bree's Way for Dorothea. It's R O R three B ten, which shows the plot plan.
Who are you under?
Um, record item three, ring? Excuse me, my name's three B ten. It's a plot plan? Oh, it's on the board.
Okay.
Adam's quicker than hell.
Thank you.
Um, so for anyone, you know, for the record, it's the plot plan for a two car garage in Bree's Way for Dorothea M. and Richard A. Pouch. Um, signed by Theodore E. Miller, civil engineering, engineer and land surveyor. Dated April twenty sixth nineteen fifty eight. And it shows a proposed two car garage that's twenty four by twenty eight on the west side of the house.
Fifty eight or eighty eight?
Fifty eight.
Fifteen?
Fifty eight.
That, that is a part of the house. That, that's the main part of the house. That is an upper garage. That is a part of the house.
It's, so you may recall at the last meeting I spoke, um, right, in the.
The first garage is fifty eight?
That, that right there is part of the house. That's why she's, looks in her kitchen to see a garage. That's when it was done.
Mrs. Reagan, in the, um, email exchange I had with her, had commented that the, she was confident the garage was an add-on because the kitchen window looked into the garage and who would ever build their house that way?
And is that garage one or garage two?
So that garage is after the house was initially built.
Has nothing to do with the, uh, apartment, so to speak, in the bottom. The, the existing is where the, uh, the apartment is.
Where's garage two?
Can I?
It's, it's the garage that was added on after the fact and also the living room alongside the house was added to it.
So the nineteen seventy permit is for a longer footprint than the sixty eight, fif, the fifty eight, um, plot plan shows. It's for, I want to say the house is fifty two feet long now. If you look at R O R three B sixteen, and that's, uh, um, plot plan from nineteen sixty nine. By that time, the house was fifty two feet long, or that permit, or plot plan was based on a fifty two foot long house.
That's the original. Where he's got his pointer. That's the original there. That's where the apartment is, the full length of that.
So the nineteen, is nineteen fifty eight, the house, or rather, I'm sorry, there's a phrase, there's a, a plot plan before that. A plot plan that had the writing on it with the renewal or removal or the handwriting on it.
That was B six. Excuse me, Jennifer Capola, for the record, that was, uh, R R three B six, yep.
So in, that shows in nineteen fifty four, um, that house was forty by thirty six, so it was only forty feet long. With the seven, nineteen seventy, uh, sixty nine, rather, it was fifty two feet.
That shows the original part of the house. That's where the basement is.
Okay. Any further questions? Uh, does anybody have a motion to close the hearing on this? On this public floor for me? For the floor?
Yeah, I'm sorry, you need to ask, just, I, I know there aren't any, but you need to ask if there are any members of the public that wish to speak. Um, I don't see any, I don't see any participants, but aside from, uh, again, your transcriptionist, um, but just please do that. Thank you.
Yeah, any public comments are welcome right now. If anybody can add any, any more information to this process, it'll be great. Uh, none there. Going once, twice? Any additional comments? Board members? Attorney Griffin?
Nope, I have no further comments.
I mean, I'm motion to close the hearing on the application as well. Uh, Counselor Capola, you don't have any additional comments? Counselor Capola?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I couldn't quite hear you. Um, no, no further comments. Thank you.
Okay, uh, we've got a motion to close the hearing on the application. Second. Motion seconded. Uh, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. I guess now we have to vote on this thing and, uh, you know.
Hey, Tony, it's Kristen.
Yes?
Can you just tell me who seconded that motion, please?
Ryan can have it.
Ryan?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't hear any.
Uh, we have to vote on this application or we have to vote on whether or not the zoning enforcement officer acted correctly. And, and I, I, I find it difficult to, with the, with the evidence that was shown to me. I find it difficult to, uh, you know, to, uh, you know, vote or, you know, rule in favor of, uh, this application. Uh, I, I feel like we need to sustain, uh, the zoning enforcement officer's ruling. But that's, that's my thought. I don't know if you, if you folks have any other thoughts. I, I, I kind of voiced my opinion, uh, because of what I've seen on, on the board, on the screen. Christine, any comment?
Just, I mean, there's a lot of information here and there's a lot of documentation that's showing this is a single family home. And I think, when you read between the lines, we're trying to ascertain intent of someone over time, whether that was legal or not. And I'm just having a hard time seeing anything showing this was ever a legal two family. I'm, I'm just having a hard time seeing that.
Uh, my take on this is that I am, I am in agreement with the appellant that, uh, that the use at the time of the ordinance change is germane. And so that even if the certificate of occupancy, which was issued in nineteen fifty four, said, single family, it makes more, uh, weight, it does more weight for me that, that the property was used as a two family from nineteen sixty. And then at the date of the ordinance change in nineteen sixty two, I agree with the appellant that it is grandfather, vested grandfather right there. So the, the main issue for me after that is whether or not there's enough to show the intent for abandonment. And as I read, you know, the judge, and again, this is where I was last time too, when the judge says, you know, further consider whether, basically whether there was an abandonment. And then if you go to the abandonment guidance that we have from the previous case law, that the intention on the part of the owner must be to relinquish permanently the nonconforming use. And I don't see enough to show me that, that there was a permanent abandonment uh, with the nineteen sixty nine, nineteen seven, we know. That, that, you know, this is why I say that the CO at that time, that the application says for a single family, I do believe that there is probably some under the radar, you know, uh, desire here. But, um, because I don't think they knew that they were, that they were nonconforming and they weren't taking that position back then. But I agree with the comments that the bar for abandonment is a little bit higher and I don't, I don't, I can't get over that bar.
Right?
No, I s- um, I just see it as a one family from all the records.
Additional comments?
So, um, a- again, uh, this is Jennifer Capola, your counsel. Um, I just want to focus you. I can give you some direction and I've done remand hearings before. I could give you some direction in deliberation. Um, I just, again, want to focus you on what the, the court asked you to do. Um, I think, uh, that you needed to, uh, take a look at that language again. Um, page two of my October twenty-fourth correspondence to you. I, I want to make sure again that you're being responsive to the court. Um, so I encourage you again to read that language over. Um, because, uh, you know, the court is asking you to, to look at and you'll recall from my comments last time. Um, and, and certainly, uh, Attorney Griffith as well commented on this tonight that with a non-conforming use, um, you're, you're looking at that period of time when the use came into existence. Um, and then you're looking at the change in the regs that made it non-conforming. Um, so you need to start with that period of time when the use came into existence. And again, that's a very clear from the judge's language. He says, upon remand, the board should consider the evidence presented by the plaintiffs concerning the timing of the construction of the basement apartment in relation to the applicability of the zoning regulations as they changed over time. Um, and, uh, then he goes on, um, beyond that footnote, you can read that again yourselves. But he says, if the board determines that the basement apartment was initially constructed as a permitted legal structure and use, then the board should further consider whether the basement apartment has remained so constructed and used over time. So again, um, I think you need to, as a group, talk about that first piece. Um, of, uh, you know, when, when the, the structure came into existence and, uh, you know, was it a permitted legal structure? And, and was the use, um, we talked about, was the use actual, was the use in existence? So you've got to look at that first. And then, and then get to, you know, you've got to get over that hump and then you talk about, um, again, the use over time. Um, and whether or not there was an abandonment. Thank you. And again, those exhibits that have the proposed findings of fact, Jennifer, again, sorry, are, um, uh, exhibit number four offered by Attorney Griffith and exhibit number ten offered by, uh, Ms. Juasty. Thank you.
Says if the board determines that the basement apartment was initially constructed as a permitted legal structure and use, then the board should further consider whether the basement apartment has remained so constructed and used over time.
Being constructed for family or additional people to live there is one thing. You know, a separate bathroom, separate kitchen, but I don't, I just, I don't see anything that shows that this was ever designed as a legal two-family or rental to strangers. And nor has anyone provided any leases over the years.
That's good.
I just don't see it. Nothing is ever designed for that. It's designed for extended families. That's how it was used for me.
I mean, we've got several pieces of paper that say, single-family, one family, one household, uh, building permit, uh, certificate of occupancy, uh, a bunch of other stuff and, and, uh, you know, I guess, uh, uh, you know, I, 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 I feel very, very uncomfortable going against town records because we could open ourselves to more litigation going against town records that are on the books in the town. And I just, I, I don't feel comfortable going against some of those records, so I, I, I'm a little bit, uh, a little bit.
So, so if I could just offer you some guidance, um, because, Mr. Chairman, you said that both in public session and now you're repeating it in deliberation. Um, you, you have to decide this matter on these facts. We don't concern ourselves with, um, you know, anything that may come down the pike. Um, you know, I often say, and I've probably even said it to you, I consider in zoning matters that there really is no such thing as precedent because everything is very fact-dependent, very record-dependent. So, um, you know, that doesn't come into play. You need, you need to look at what's in front of you, again, determine, um, you know, was, was, uh, this, this use legal? Was it, was it actual? Was it an existing use? And then, you know, then the zoning regs change beyond that, did, did the use continue throughout? Um, so those are the issues and you're deciding it based upon, uh, the, the evidence that's before you um, for your consideration, not, not with regard to the implications on any further, or future matters. Thank you.
Well, yeah, I understand that. I'm, I'm, I was just, uh, speaking to that because, uh, because of all the documents that have been, you know, put up on the, on the screen here, you know, uh, all the, uh, documents that were, you know, displayed up on the, on the, on the monitor. Uh, but as far as, as far as voting for this counselor, I mean, uh, what, what, what point are we at now? Do we take a vote, uh, uh, and, and should we vote to uphold Maureen's decision or to not uphold Maureen's decision? I mean, how do we get our members to vote?
I think that you, i- it appears to me that you need to have, again, more discussion. Does, does, does everybody have, uh, the two proposed findings of fact before you at this point? If you could find those, those documents?
Yes.
And Attorney, Attorney, Adam is, Adam is being very kind and he's, he's blowing them up for you as well. Um, side by side. Which is helpful, I think, so you could see the two. So you have, on the one hand, um, you, you've got Attorney Griffith, I'm, I'm going to start with his, they were submitted first. Um, number one, he, you know, he, he's proposed that the basement at the property was originally designed and constructed to be used as a second dwelling. Um, and there's, and there's some additional detail with regard to that in his paragraph, number paragraphs two and three. We've got, you know, when it was originally built, um, he's claiming that the concrete slab and foundation included a door opening form um, through the foundation into a garage and a front door to the exterior to be u- used exclusively by basement dwellers. Um, and then the doors and gar- garage bay were actually exclusively and continuously used by the basement residents. So again, you know, he's saying it was construction, constructed, so he's getting that, that, um, legal structure piece of it. Um, and then he's arguing the use of the structure, okay, and not, um, paragraph two. Um, then the existing basement plumbing is the original piping built into the original slab designed to serve and then actually serving a base, a bathroom, shower stall, sink, toilet and kitchen um, located in the basement dwelling and confirmed by the Berlin Building Official. Um, and then he also mentions the cabinetry in, uh, his numbered paragraph four. Uh, vintage cabinets were custom-built by the original owner of the basement dwelling, who was a cabinet maker. He offered, um, some exhibits with regard to, uh, Mr. Pouch being a cabinet maker. He, I think he gave you his, his death certificate. Um, and then you, I, with regard, again, to this piece of it, which is the, the pre-change in the zoning regulations, okay? So that the, when, when the use is a conforming use, when the, the structure is a conforming structure. Um, Maureen counters in her paragraph one, um, to the left, "Town records do not show any permits indicating that the house was built, rebuilt or renovated for use as a two-family dwelling. Um, therefore, a claim of, of an existing non-conformity for use as a two-family house is not supported by the record." Um, so she's in, indicating also in, in numbered paragraph two, "Conditions of the house as presented by the appellant with photographs and testimony regarding its amenities do not indicate authorization or use of the basement as a rentable dwelling unit." Um, and, um, then she indicates there's no record of any prior owner working to reconcile any claimed inaccuracy in the town's records, including tax records that the house, um, is a single-family dwelling. So she, again, this is her position, um, that, that it wasn't built as a two-family. Then it wasn't authorized to be built as a two-family. It wasn't acknowledged by the town as being built as a two-family. So you have two very opposing arguments there. So you have to, you know, you need to determine where, where are you falling. Um, there, there are four of you, um, so you do, by statute, as you know, you do need to agree. Um, so do keep that in mind as well.
I still have a little head up on, like, you know, historically, there's no leases here and we have some evidence of people having other family members living there, that, that's not really a, a legal rental. Do you know what I'm saying? Even if they contributed financially to the household, I just.
I, I don't see that as a legal rental either. Uh, I guess, I, I, you know, the town has got some pretty decent records. Uh, the town records don't show any permits, okay? Um, the zoning ordinance of the town was adopted in nineteen forty-eight, revised in nineteen fifty-four, and it would have been in effect at the time of the building permit application, okay? It says, "A state's a family that's using these regulations will be deemed a member of the physical working together as a single housekeeping unit." Uh, "Single housekeeping unit nineteen fifty-four, number of names, one, nineteen fifty-four, single, two, uh, with a farm zone at the time allowed two-family dwellings, all initial construction and rebuild documents referred to as single housekeeping unit. Handwritten data completed on the application for building department dated October sixth nineteen fifty-four, number of room six attached. Related building permit, that's what it is, okay. Number of housekeeping units, one, certificate of occupancy nineteen fifty-five, number of families, one. Uh, applicant for building permit, September nineteen fifty-six, certificate of occupancy, uh, this application taken as, this is the one that was a renewal, the renewal one. Uh, one story was issued, building permit, okay, yeah. We acknowledge that the not performed in existence at the time and have been allowed to continue. Non-natureful apartment or second housekeeping unit, finished maintenance was indicated on applications to the town. The soil, related soil test results, calculations for three banners. Assessor's part of the basement roof, the one room was rough plumbing only. Entirement has been updated after the reconstruction until creation in next year, card seventy-six. After certificate of zoning compliance with the town's zoning review, uh, single two, okay, permits should have been obtained. That's next. Tax assessment records provided consistently listed houses as a one-family. That's, that's another, okay. Spot check of older homes in the area that was once zoned farm zone, showed that the assessor records listed in that performing use as two-family with apartment or similar designation. Samples are expected to be provided at the hearing, okay, well. Had some families that were listed as two-families, some properties that were listed as two-families, because there were two families. I don't know if they are now, but they were listed as two-families and then maybe they still are, I don't know. But it says that spot check of older homes in the area was once zoned farm zone, showed that the assessor records listed the not conforming uses as two-family with apartment or similar designation. Any indication of amenities on the assessor card or indication of fundamentalities for taxation purposes and not required approval permit in the zone? Obviously, that's right. conditions of the house as presented by the appellant do not indicate authorization or use of the basement as a rentable dwelling unit. Okay, um. Egress openings, uh, door hardware, regardless of the amendment. Okay, tax assessment records going back decades and that show imminent taxes for two-family.
Say it again?
The town has no records that the house was a two-family, a two-family dwellings with a permit.
There was no tax record. There was never tax since the two-family.
Never.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think the taxation is even relevant.
I think it's very relevant.
Yeah.
I think it's a hundred percent relevant.
Great difference there.
I think it's very relevant.
Yeah.
But from the legal, the legal, the legal definition of permitted and, and used. The taxation is, is, the taxation is a separate process that is incidental to the legal permit and use. That's why I, I don't put as much weight on the tax, the tax documents. That's why I, I would hang myself on, on the C O, the applications. Because it's an incidental process, it's a process that could result in finding that there is an unpermitted use. But in this case, it didn't. The assessment process and review, and that, that's just, that's where I am. Uh, cards, I just, I was.
Oh, this other one is, "Evidence is not supportive for two-family use of the amenities of the basement second kitchen. Such a vast existence as amenities in single-family homes." I, I live around about a hundred pictures here in the downstairs, which for me is totally irrelevant, irrelevant, okay? And, and those don't belong here because pictures of a second kitchen are not relevant. I think there's a lot more relevance in, in the building permits and certificate of occupancy than.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with you there and I also would add, there's, there's relevance in, in the footprint and the foundation. Not necessarily the amenities inside, the footprint and the foundation for intended or potential use.
Well, I don't understand that.
You could do that to any basement.
Because they got any foundation, any footprint. I don't understand that at all.
Well, but then as it relates to, to the acceptable use at that time, that definition of dwelling provided for up to two families, so.
I'm not following you at all.
Well, it's the separate, separate entrance to the basement.
It's a walkout basement.
Uh, yeah, I agree, but.
It's a what? There's a million walkout basements sometimes.
But that doesn't, that doesn't mean that, that doesn't obviate the fact that it could, it could support the use of a two-family.
Well, you wouldn't put a hatchway on a walkout basement, okay? You'd have to put a door there. I mean, that doesn't have any, that doesn't make any sense to me at all. Really doesn't.
You're saying that it's concluding that there's a hatchway and a door.
It's not concluding that there's. You're, you're saying it's, it's a walkout basement, well, if there's a door there, you wouldn't put a hatchway on a walkout basement.
If you can walk out, you will walk.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it happens all the time. Depends on the local property. You know, I mean, it happens all the time. I, I can't, I can't use that as a, as a, you know. I mean, if, if we're looking for, look, looking for issues, okay? We can find a lot of issues. We can find, you know, look at the downstairs, it's all plumbed up for a second family. But the town records tell me that that was a single-family. The taxes tell me it was a single-family. All the permits, all the applications, all say single-family and they've said it for forty years. We're going to make it a two-family? Somebody's going to act for us with an axe.
Yeah, well, I'd like to turn a couple, I have to focus on this, this one particular.
No, I'm not trying to say. No, I'm not trying to say we should be, not setting precedent or, or not setting precedent, but if, 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 uh, if we have to, you know, we're town officials, we have to uphold the town records, okay? The town records say that, okay? I can't, in my, you know, I don't know, in my professional opinion or whatever you want to say, I can't go back against the town records. And just because there's a walkout basement or because there's a bathroom downstairs, I'm, I'm gonna go against the town records? Uh-uh, I'm not doing that. I'm sorry. I cannot do that. I would love to do it, okay? To help Mr. Mitchell, but I, I can't do it.
So it sounds like, it sounds like we can't get past square one as a group, and why? The majority, it sounds like, and there's a majority of us that feel that we can't even say that it was initially constructed as a permitted legal structure and use as a two-family. We cannot say, we cannot find that as a fact.
Yes, that's not, not...
I don't see that as a fact.
It's anyone not anywhere to be from.
Again, there's, I feel like we're, we're trying to interpret a lot of intentions over the years. And to me, that's not a fact.
Well, the intention comes later. Well, no, I guess it does, it, it is in that first piece too. But intentions are relevant. Intentions are, are, are part of the consideration. And this is where we have to infer, we have to make reasonable inferences. So we're allowed to, we're allowed to bridge gaps where there might be, might not be a hard fact or where there are contraindicating facts.
And then, you know, the way this, this proposed findings or just now these, these other facts that were presented to us here. I mean, you know, there's three, one, two, three, four pages of facts, you know? I, I guess, you know, the first page of facts is, is all town records. The second page is half town records and half hearsay. The third page is all hearsay. So I, I can't go to the third page, hearsay. I have to just kind of just toss it in my, in my mind, okay?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, it's Jennifer. I don't mean to cut you off, but, but could you just indicate what record item you're referring to? Just so, just for clarity. It, it's helpful if you refer to record items too, just, just for clarity. Thanks.
I'm referring to page, there's, there's three pages of record items, okay? There's a cover page, and then there's three pages. The first page of record items is all town records. Pretty much 90% town records. I'm referring to that as being, you know, I, I think, you know...
But, but what document are you referring to?
Exhibit number 11. Exhibit number 11 is the, the member of the...
Exhibit 10. Exhibit 10, all of them on the first page. Item 1A and 1B, it's all town records that have been presented here.
So, so is it the memorandum of staff comments updated 11/2020? That's what's underlined? Okay, so that's exhibit number 11. Okay, thank, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Thank you.
Exhibit 11, number 10. That is 11.
That's 11.
Is the, is the proposed findings of facts, number 10?
The, um, the proposed findings of fact that were submitted by Ms. Juasty are, that is number 10, the proposed findings, yes, number 10.
Okay, I'm looking at 10. I'm looking at the right one.
Well, there are two. The, the first page is 10, the second page starts with...
Oh, okay. I'm looking at 11.
Maybe of them stapled, I don't...
Right, they're stapled together. That's why I was calling the page two of 10. All right, I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's okay. That's, that makes sense.
Okay, page 1 of 11 has got all, all of, you know, the town records in it. Page two, uh, there's a couple of town records up at the front, you know? Item number three and item number four. And then it gets into stuff that gets a little bit more vague, you know? And then page, page three is, 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 uh, stuff that, you know, it's, it's all, to me, it's like, there's no record of anything there. It's all, you know, there was a bathroom that was put in, there was a shower that was put in. Somebody lived there, you know, but it's all, it's all conjecture. I don't have anything to back it up in terms of, you know, a town record, a legal record from the town. The, the first page of, I guess what I'm saying is, is the first page of a memorandum of staff comments, you know, exhibit 11, page one, is where I kind of, uh, I, I have to kind of, uh, focus on that as, as a, uh, as a guide to, to making the decision. I don't know if I can explain myself well. I'm not that good at that.
It sounds to me, Tony, like you're saying that you want to hang our hats on the, the exhibit number 10, number one. That we should make that statement as a finding of our fact. And because that relates, that number one relates to the judge's language, it says if the board determines that the basement apartment was initially constructed as a permitted legal structure and use. And we are saying, or we, it sounds like we're moving in the direction of saying that, that exhibit 10, number one, as a statement of our fact, finding of fact, is, the answer is no. We are, we, the board does not determine that the basement apartment was initially constructed as a permitted legal structure and use. Is that fair, Attorney Capola?
That's an, I'm not a voting member. I, I, I under, I understand, I understand what you're trying to do is just to get clarity from, from your fellow commissioners or board members, rather, that, that they, whether or not they agree with the statement made by Ms. Juasty in her proposed finding of fact, number one, paragraph one. And, and that there's a correlation between that statement and the fi, one of the findings that the court wants you to make. That is accurate. I agree with that. I, I do.
Is everybody in agreement with that? Or is that something that, uh, there's, you know, there's some issues there? I mean, that's, that's, I think you kind of hit the nail on the head on that one. But I think that's, that's the gist of what, what the judge is looking for, I think. I, I, and Attorney Capola, I, I don't know if there's any other comments that you need to make on that behalf or, or whatever, but, I don't know.
So I think what you're, again, what you're asking me, just in follow-up, and, and this is sort of a repeat of what, uh, of, uh, what Member Whiteside said, but you're, you're basically asking me, is it sufficient for you to make a finding that, um, the basement apartment was not initially constructed as a permitted legal structure and use based upon, uh, a finding that the town records do not, again, the language that Ms. Juasty uses, that the town records do not show any permits indicating that the house was built, rebuilt, or renovated for use as a two-family dwelling, and therefore a claim of existing nonconformity for use as a two-family house is not supported by the record. And I, I, I think you're asking me, do you need to go further than that? Is that the question?
Pretty much, yes.
So, um, you know, I, I, again, um, I think that there is a difference, and this is, this is recognized in the findings of fact that Attorney Griffith presented as well. So there's this, this idea of, you know, was it constructed and designed? And I'm going back to his paragraph number one. Was it constructed and, was it designed and constructed to be used as, um, you know, a two, a two-family, right? Understanding, obviously, that the, that, that that's the argument, right? That the basement was to be used and not by, um, the family that utilized the main house, right? And there's, you, you talked a little bit about intent and how you're having a hard time finding that it was their intent based upon the documents that you've received, um, that it was the original property owner's intent that in, in designing and constructing it, that it, it be used as a two-family or two-dwelling, uh, structure. So, um, you know, that could be part of your collective. I know that that was something that was discussed, that could be part of your collective reasoning as well, along with that. And, uh, I think that, again, just, just going back and looking at the judge's language, remembering, um, uh, you know, what, uh, we've talked about throughout with regard to actual use, I think you can comment on that as well. Because I think there's a difference between, uh, how the, the, the structure itself was designed and constructed and, and intent intermingled with that versus, um, the actual use that it was put to. So that's something else that, that, uh, another area that, uh, you could also make a finding with regard to. And I think that that's responsive as well to the court's direction. Because it's asking you, you know, the court, the judge was asking you to consider, um, how, how it's used over time as well in that same section. So, or that same sentence of, of the remand order. I hope that that sort of answers the question.
Yeah, and, and I'm looking at the judge's thing. Based upon the board's factual findings, after further consideration at the remand hearing, using the evidence presented and reasonable inferences therefrom, the board should then conclude whether the basement apartment is a pre-existing legal, non-conforming structure and use or not. Only after determining and considering all of the foregoing can the board determine whether or not all decisions are correct. Nothing is pointing to this as being a legal, non-conforming structure in my mind. And that's what, that's what, you know? That's, that's what, that's what the problem is.
So again, he talks, he talks about, um, at the very beginning in the first sentence, he says, "Evidence of a, of a pre-existing legal, non-conforming structure and use." So it's not, it's not just the structure. There is that use element too throughout that I think he wants you weighing in on. So, um... So I think, I think, I think you need to include both elements. Again, from, from when the property was constructed.
Pre-existing legal, non-conforming use.
Yes, non-conforming structure and, and use. Structure and use.
So now you've got two items that were, that I guess, that's Maureen, I don't know, but Jennifer is, Kristen is taking some notes on this.
Kristen should still be on. Excuse me this morning, and I know I'm not supposed to talk, but Kristen should still be on.
We've got two items, uh...
If not, she could certainly, we lost her or something. She certainly has the tape. She's on.
She, I, I'm still here, I'm still here.
Based on a discussion with Attorney Capola, we've got two items that, uh, we discussed, just, you know, in this, in this discussion.
I, I guess, I, I guess my point, just kind of to clarify for you, is, is if you, I know that you're, you're leaning towards, again, that numbered paragraph one, um, in Ms. Juasty's proposed findings of fact. I, I'm not sure that the second sentence that appears in, in that proposed paragraph necessarily is, is completely responsive to the judge's remand order. I think he, I think he's looking for more detail than, than that.
But we just discussed two items that were in the judge's, left, uh, judge's remand order. We talked about presenting reasonable, pre-existing legal, non-conforming structure and use or not, okay? That was one item. What was the item we discussed before that? We had to discuss something else above, above. The record contains findings that the structure of the basement apartment was legally constructed. And that's what he's, I guess, remains over time, considering the use of the structure. That at the time, the basement apartment was legally permitted. It was never permitted since 19... 52, I don't know, 52 or whatever it was, but 52 is that. Instead of the evidence presented, considering the time, the timing of the construction of the basement apartment in relation to the capability of the design regulations that they changed over time. The actual, uh, town records, you take that. I mean, I mean, isn't the judge looking for the town records?
Well, and that's, and that's why I said to you, you know, to the extent that, um, you're making particular findings, I think it would be helpful for, for the court to know the record items that you are relying upon for the findings that you are making. You know, I, I believe that the chair is, are you continuing to read, Mr. Chair, from exhibit number 11?
No, I'm actually looking at the, the judge's remand order and basically saying that the, and like I said, I'm not an attorney, okay? I'm with the Zoning Board of Appeals, okay? So we're not judge, jury, and whatever. But I'm looking at the judge's remand order. It says you should look at the records of, you know, whether it wasn't a, a two-family or a single-family and whatever, where it was. And I'm just saying that exhibit 11 shows clearly that the records show that this was a single-family, okay? And then, you know, there's evidence presented that says, uh, you know, conclude whether the basement apartment is a pre-existing legal, non-conforming structure and use or not. Okay, well, there's evidence that it's not, it was not a legal, it wasn't a, it wasn't not a legal, not conforming use. In other words, it didn't ship, we didn't have any records of leases and, and so on and so forth of, you know, the people actually living there had, uh, people that were living there had, were, were kind of family ties or, or they were friends of people that were living upstairs or whatever it was. But it wasn't really a, a separate total lease. I mean, it wasn't like, you know, I, I leased it to somebody who I don't even know. You know, it wasn't like an apartment for somebody that, you know... I don't know how to say it, but, I mean, he said it here. He said, based upon the board's factual findings after further consideration at the remand hearing, using the evidence presented and the reasonable inferences therefrom, the board should then conclude whether the basement apartment is a pre-existing legal and non-conforming structure and use or not. Okay, well, you know, I, I don't, we don't have enough information to show that it's a legal conforming use or a legal conforming structure. Is that what the judge wants? I mean, because that's what we're pretty much hanging our hats on.
But anyway, what we're hanging our hats on is that by, by the original certificate of occupancy, which states it's a single-family dwelling, that it is not permitted as a legal multifamily or, you know, a two-family dwelling. And then, that, so that takes care of the, the permitting struc-, permitted structure. The permitted use, while there may be some evidence that there is a, that there is a use in nineteen sixty to nineteen sixty-two, there's not a preponderance of evidence that it is a separate, because we, we, we find issue with the fact that it was a family member and it wasn't a separate housekeeping unit, like a separate, a separate whole family. But I, I, I think I've heard that, that's, that's where we were having some problem, right? Is that there, there's no lease from the, from the son to the parents. There's an affidavit from, is it affidavit from the son? Yeah, the affidavit from the son, who said, I rented the apartment from nineteen sixty to nineteen eighty-one. Or no, he, he says that there was occupants down there? Or was it him?
It was Reagan that said, Reagan woman that said, it was the brother-in-law lived there for only two years, the old one. The email correspondence, correspondence from.
That affidavit that talked about, so I'm focused on it, that time period, nineteen sixty, nineteen seventy-two.
You know, you're, you're, you're referring to, this is Jennifer Capola for the record. Um, you're referring to the affidavit of Kevin Seer, um, which was, um, Attorney Griffith's, uh, item number eighteen. It is part of your exhibit two. It was an attachment to my correspondence to you. Um, and I, I don't know if you recall, but I had done a little, uh, title sheet that just said, uh, documents submitted by Attorney D. Griffith. Um, it is the second item. The first item, item number seventeen that he marked, um, was a, a narrative that he called the actual use as a basement dwelling, October thirteenth, nineteen fifty-four to date. Um, and then it's the, that statement of facts by, um, that, that was attested to, um, by Kevin Seer is the next page. And, uh, Adam has been kind enough to put it, put it up for you so you could review that.
Well, I, I, I've got three, three items that, that I just noted there. I, I see that, but I got three items that I noted. All construction records show single family, uh, for permits, certificates of occupancy. There was an intent to abandon use of this with the last permit that was back in the, I don't know, after the house burned down back in the, uh, sixties? Sixties, I think it was. And then the basement apartment is not a legal non-conforming use. We can't get any, 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 we can't get any, any data that it's a legal conforming use. The basement apartment is, based on all the records that we've got, is a legal non-conforming use. It's not a legal conforming, it's not a legal non-conforming use. So basically what we're saying is, is that, you know, those are those three items that we've got, to feed back to the judge. That, that's what I, that's, I, you know, based on our discussion, that's what I got out of this. Uh, if I, if I didn't get, if I didn't get it right, you're gonna slap me on the head, but I, that's what I got out of it. Okay, there was the construction records. There's the fact that, you know, that this, this piece of property as far as a, you know, uh, non-conforming use was abandoned because they never put it in as a two-family. They put it in as a single-family dwelling. And then, you know, that means further down the line, the basement apartment, even if it was rented or it was used by somebody in the family, uh, it's not a legal, not conforming use.
And even if it was, you're then extending that and saying that it was abandoned on the nineteen seventy CO or the application for CO by saying again, now for the third time, that it was a single-family dwelling. I, that, that, that's what we're saying.
Well, yeah, it was up there three times. But that, that's, that's the problem.
Yeah, I'm just trying to help clarify, clarify the, the evidence that we need to put in our statement.
Does that, uh, make any sense, Costner?
Does, um, does anybody else wish to, to, uh, we haven't heard anything from Mr. Zalek. Did you want to add anything?
No, I concur with the discussion.
That's been said.
At this point, I, I'm not sure if we can take a, a vote on this or, or not. And, and, you know, what format we should put the vote in, whether we should make a vote.
So, so let's just talk about that. I think that, um, in terms of your vote, again, um, that you, the vote, or the motion rather, should contain, um, the collective reasons, uh, for, uh, the proposed action. Um, and, uh, but I think at this point in time, you've had, uh, a lengthy discussion. Um, I think you should try to formulate as a group, um, what that motion should be and what the collective reasons for whatever action, um, you're readying to take, uh, you know, what the articulation of those reasons should be in your motion. Um, so I think you, you want to focus again. Um, it's, it sounds like, um, everybody is in agreement um, that there, there was not at, I guess, at any time, a legal conforming, uh, structure and use, um, as, um, uh, again, a two-family or, um, uh, a multifamily, uh, structure and use. Um, so just separating, again, that appears to be, uh, where you're leaning. Um, I think you would want to, to identify, what evidence you're relying upon or, uh, you've talked about lack of evidence. You've talked about lack of intent. Um, so what evidence you're relying upon for each piece of that? So if you're gonna make a finding, and, and again, in, in the proposed motion that your collective finding, your collective reason, um, is, is or is not that, um, you know, there, there is or is not a pre-existing legal conforming structure, then, and then doing the same with use. So the structure component versus the use component, articulating, um, the evidence upon which you're relying for that. I think that would, that is what the court is looking for. Do you understand what I'm getting at?
Did you just say that, no?
I think I just kind of said that.
Did you just kind of say what the argument was?
Number one, all construction records show single family. There's permits and certificates of occupancy that are showing, uh, single families since nineteen fifty-four, as a matter of fact. Okay, never showed anywhere where it was a two-family since nineteen fifties, nineteen fifty-four. Uh, which led to another permit when the house burned down in the sixties, uh, and it was listed as a single family again, which kind of referred that they were abandoning the use of it as a, as a, as a multifamily, if in fact it was ever listed as a multifamily, which it was not. Okay, so there's a, there's the construction records, all listed, single family, um, one household. There's the, uh, last, uh, 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 last, uh, certificate of occupancy or last permit certificate of occupancy combination that resulted in, uh, intent to abandon the property as a, as a, as a multifamily. Okay, and then there's document that the basement apartment, is not a legal non-conforming use because we don't have anything to show that it was a legal, not, legal, non-conforming use. We don't have any evidence.
So, so then you don't, if, if, if that's your finding, then you don't get to abandonment. If, if you're finding that there, there was, um, no legal conforming structure, there was no legal conforming use, then, then you're never getting to abandonment. So that, that, be careful, be careful not to confuse the court with that because, um,
I don't know how to word it, but the point is that, that, that non-conforming, that those permits were single family. Okay, and the intent was to keep it a single family. Uh, and back in the fifty-four, fifty-five, sixty-nine, uh, the, the intent was to keep it as a single family. Okay, so, all I'm saying is, is that there was never.
For example, okay, I said to you, okay, so, so there's a circumstance and, and, um, and, uh, Mr. Whiteside keeps bringing this up, you know, what are the reasonable inferences? You're, you're, you're making an inference of intent there. What is that based on? You need, you need to advise the court. Um, again, the reason why we're having this remand hearing is, um, because the court felt that, uh, as reflected in the transcript from your prior proceeding, that, um, you know, you didn't, you didn't identify reasons for, um, the upholding of the order, that decision that you made in the prior hearing. Um, so you, you need to be as specific as you can be with making reference to the record items. So I encourage you to do that.
So I guess what you're saying is, just dumb this way down, you can't abandon something that ever existed? Is that kind of what you just?
Well, I, again, I gave you.
Is that what you kind of said?
Well, I, I gave you some case law, um, that, that was case law that, uh, was, uh, discussed at the hearing at the merits. Um, the case law is very instructive, I think, with that. Um, again, that case law is attached to the letter that I gave you. That's exhibit two, um, for your, for your last meeting. It talks very specifically about that issue. And I, and I think the remand language is indicative of that. You can only, you, you, you only get to how it was used over time. Okay, if you determine, and, and this is in that, that second piece, um, of the remand where it says, if the board determines that the basement apartment was initially constructed as a permitted legal structure and use, then the board should further consider whether the basement apartment was, has remained so constructed and used over time. You don't, you don't get to abandonment if you, if you guys are, are leaning towards determining that there, there never existed, okay, a permitted legal structure and use, a, or a legal conforming structure and use is another, right? Then, then you're never getting to abandonment. And I, I understand, uh, sort of what, what you're saying is, is that because you, you're, you were talking again about the intent piece of it, that I think what you're trying to say about that nineteen seventy timeframe, because you, you've gone back to this a number of times, particularly the chairman, is that even if there was, uh, uh, legal conforming use, um, before it was abandoned at, at the time of that rebuild, um, but, but remember the, you got to remember about that factually too, that you've got an opponent that has argued that that didn't, that rebuild did not impact the basement structure. Um, that was brought up a number of times. It only, it only impacted, um, you know, the, the main level there. So, um, so just, you know, I, I, you're going in, and again, I, I, I don't, I cannot, in my role, I can guide you around this language that's been given to you, but I can't guide the discussion. Um, which is why I, um, you know, I certainly am not gonna um, comment to you about the particular items of evidence that, you know, you should be referring to to support whatever decision that you reach. Um, that's not my role. That's got to come from, from the board.
So, just logical brain. There was a fire that completely destroyed the first level and that, and his family had to move out sometime in nineteen sixty-nine or seventy, the fire, the first floor. And you're putting that out with water, there's gravity, that, that basement had to be affected.
Sure.
There's no way that the whole first floor was trashed, where they had to move out and that basement was not affected. There's just no way that's possible. So, it, it, even in, in, in Seer's affidavit, statement of facts here, it, it, it just, it says that him and his family temporarily moved out of the house. Like, it doesn't even say anything about the tenants that were living there or tenants moving out. I think it's a lack of documentation of actual true-to-family that is holding me up.
Well, I, I, it's ten o'clock, I'm hoping. And, you know, I'm not a lawyer and I don't get paid a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour. And I'm gonna point that right out to you right now. So I have three items here, or two items here. I'd said it once, I said, the construction records show a single family. The permits show a single family. The certificate, uh, certificates of occupancy show a single family. Okay, in nineteen sixty-nine, there was a fire. Okay, the person didn't put it in as a two-family, put it in as a single family. But if there was, I, 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 if there was any kind of pre-existing use, it's no longer, it's no longer there because it was put in as a single family. And we never saw where, and, and we, it, it never, it never existed as a legal conforming structure for, for a, a two-family. Okay, we, I never saw any evidence of that. Okay, that's the bottom line. And I think we should take this to a vote. I don't know if there's any more discussion on this, but it's ten o'clock and I'm sick of it. You want to continue this? Next month? I mean, I'd be glad to continue it next month, but I, you know, at this point, I've, 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 I've gone through enough of this. Okay, I don't have any evidence that shows me that this is a legal conforming use. Okay, I, I've got a lot of evidence that shows that this was a single family, certificates of occupancy and building permits, okay? And that's what we can tell the judge. And if you want to word it a different way for the judge, you can word it however you want, but that's what we can tell the judge. This is what we found. Okay, and I, I think we, we, we need to vote on this or, or either continue it to next month. Whatever your pleasure is.
I'll do either.
Uh, I think we vote. We just have to construct a sentence for our decision that we can vote on.
I say, I'll say it again. I'll make a motion.
Make, yeah, make a motion.
I'll make a motion to vote on this to uphold the zoning enforcement officer's decision based on the fact that all the construction records that are shown for this property show it as a single family, both permits and certificates of occupancy. And also a fire in nineteen sixty-nine. Is it my, am I correct if it's nineteen sixty-nine? I, I'm not sure, you know, uh, I don't remember. I think it was sixty-nine.
Sixty-eight or sixty-nine.
Uh, maybe you can help me on that.
Seer said sixty-nine or seventy, in his statement. Seer said sixty-nine or seventy, in his statement. Sometime in nineteen sixty.
It was a fire in sixty-nine, that also showed it as a single family. Okay, and number one, that, that's number, number one A or whatever. And number two, nothing ever existed to show that this was a legal conforming structure and a legal conforming use. And I still say, based on that sixty-nine fire, that when they said that this was a single family, that, you know, there was an intent there to just, you know, forget about it. And I know, I don't know what you wanna call it, but there was no intent there to make it, to continue to make it multifamily, if it was in fact multifamily, which it wasn't. Because in nineteen fifty-four to nineteen fifty-five, they showed that it wasn't. Those are the two items, basically, that we can give to the judge. Now, I don't know, Constance, do you have anything else that you need to, no, because I, I'm at the end of my wood here.
You started that with making a motion.
I made the motion, I'm sorry.
Yes, you did. You made a motion, so any, any amendment to the motion should come from within your board. I'm not gonna amend your motion.
Any amendments?
It was a very long motion, and I will, uh, do each, I guess if she wrote it all down, I will second that.
Any discussion?
I have nothing. Nothing.
All right, well, let's take it to a vote. Did the zoning enforcement officer act correctly in, are we upholding the zoning enforcement officer's decision, cease and desist decision for one thousand five Kensington Road? And we take it to a vote. I vote yes, I'm upholding the zoning enforcement officer's decision. Christine?
Yes.
Corey?
Yay. Ryan says yes.
Okay, it's, it's unanimous.
I don't, I can motion to continue.
Is there anything else on your job? I, I would make a motion to move the approval of that, of the next meeting. Three, a second. And we've already reviewed the GDA two thousand.
GDA?
Twenty-one schedule.
The other, the GDA.
A seconded. The one made, the motion made seconded, in all favor.
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to adjourn? Begging. All favor?
Aye.